All right, good afternoon. We're going to call the committee of the hold to order. We have one item to add to the agenda. That's the quarterly report for the fire chief, so we'll deal with that as part of the departmental reports. With that, I want you to build off the agenda.
Move.
Second.
In favor? Any questions carry? Copies of that part of the department report have been circulated. Please welcome this afternoon Inspector McDonald from the Comox Valley RCP. And he's going to give us his update on things like the policing and he's got a guest with him. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you as always for the invitation to speak to you today. I see we have a theft and theft complaint. I was lost for the while. But we did find our way in, so that's good. I'd like to just quickly start off by publicly expressing on behalf of the RCP condolences to Captain Randy's family and friends and every time in Comox for losing such an admirable individual. All right, once again, it's about time here to produce some first quarter statistics for you. Again, as always, in general terms, you need to be careful. Randy is bad. And I again caution you to be careful with the one others. So a couple of things I want to highlight on this list is, first of all, if we look in the property category, I'm talking about breaking enters for businesses, and that would be the second category down, which shows a 200% increase. Granted, it's from one to three, but of those three, those have been solved. That individual was located, arrested, charged, all that good stuff. And essentially where that person was doing the breaking into businesses is to steal a computer gun. And so we were able to locate that individual.
Was that the same person?
Same. Now, some of those, I'm always careful how I say this, some of those, we're able to lay several charges on that individual, not necessarily for everything that we're quite certain he's done, but again, we're talking about the standard proof that sometimes we couldn't meet, but certainly that individual was responsible for breaking any break-in or anything throughout Comox. Secondly, theft of motor vehicles, which shows a very small increase, granted only one, but in terms of the Comox Valley itself, not just the time in Comox, it was a significant increase in this first quarter of the year. We've been successful in locating three individuals and charging them. And carting that was done through use of a vac car as well, which again continues to be a valuable tool. But since those individuals have been charged and arrested, we've had three theft of vehicles in the entire Comox Valley. So we're hopeful that we've located the person responsible for the majority of those. Moving down the list, if you look at mischief, significant increase, obviously, in mischief. Again, this is a trend that seems to continue throughout the Comox Valley. And this is one of those initiatives or one of those areas that we're targeting in the upcoming annual performance plan, which is nearing its completion and will be able to indicate what that's going to look like to you in the future.
How do you define mischief?
Mischief is essentially damage to property. It does encapsulate a lot of other things, but when we talk about mischief, the vast majority of these damage to property either through, you know, vandalism or some kind of, in this case, I know there were several small fires that were around the area in the last week, so those will be captured in there as well. Looking at drug possession, it shows a 300% increase, two to eight, so again, I don't think that's something that we need to be too alarmed about, which again translates into a 167% increase in total drug violence. We're talking about relatively minor offenses and the grass state instead. As I move down my list, I think I'm going to flip to page, oh, just referring to violent offenses, the decrease there as well. And the very last category, their 90-day suspensions, an increase of 300% from before. You'll just see that number steadily require and pretty good new hierarchy legislation and the way in which we're utilizing that. So you'll see a lot more of those kinds of things. If we go to page two, those first quarter fairly significant increase in traffic violations issued, and that falls on the heels of increased effort and enforcement. I would like to tell you that as you look down, that the dramatic decrease in collisions is a result of that. I don't know that I can say it's, that's 100% the cause, but it doesn't hurt. And that's always a good thing. Fugilism is better off now. If we go down to that third blackened box up in the log, just talk about total calls for service, shows a small increase in total calls for service, which is probably one of the first times in all the last while, which we can say we had actually an increase in calls. So again, it's relatively small, but it's just something we keep an eye on. One more thing I wanted to mention, and again, this comes down to sort of back up to that mischief category, is we've had not a lot of calls, but a lot of information relating to McDonald's on Guthrie and Anderton, and that has become a bit of a hangout area, lots of youth there, especially over the spring break, we had a significant number of problems there. So we've focused a bit of attention on that area on the weekends, and it's just one of those areas we're going to watch from the weather and as school lets out, just to encourage people that like to go there to find something more productive to do with their time. So that's on our radar for.
That one opened, and that's open 24 hours.
It is open 24 hours. Of course, it's not people going to purchase food, it's people standing around the parking lot. We have written some, recently charged some individuals. Both of you found out, the liquor offenses and things that, make sure you just try and keep a lid on that area. And I guess the last thing I'd like to do before any questions go ahead, introduce Sergeant Roger Fulon. He's been in operations since the beginning of the year. Roger has a wealth of operational experience, including being a dispatch commander of both SOUP and Ladysmith, a worker in the past, and is a top notch individual. So Roger Fulon.
Welcome, Roger.
Thank you.
All right, questions? For the inspector, go ahead, you.
Yes, Inspector, this the youth detail with the bike group, when would that be starting?
Starting. And where, as I, and I think I mentioned this once before, it's something that, well, we believe in bicycle patrols in general, I'm an ex-bicycle cop, I guess, and their value is enhanced, and that's something that I want to get more of, it's just a matter of adjusting things in the dispatch structure to make it happen. So we're going to be able to see more bicycles.
Go ahead, Ken.
Just have one question on your mischief charges. I see we went from 13 up to 37. Would that increase, would that be sort of one or two groups of people in your estimation, or would it be just a, like, what would make, what would suddenly cause that? I mean, that's a fairly significant rise.
And speaking in general terms, I can tell you that mischief, theft of motor vehicles, even break-in enters really is almost always attributable to one or two individuals or small groups of people. And when those people are apprehended or, you know, somehow in some other way in here just to stop what they're doing, it tends to, tends to stop the bulk of those offenses. In this case, I can't, I can't attach mischief to any particular individuals or talk about it in terms of, in terms of, really that sort of thing, like a cab theft vehicle. This is something that's definitely on our radar. It is, as I said, form a part of our performance plan for the next year as well, and it's something that is on our radar, we keep an eye on, hoping we can, as opposed to impact on the numbers. But it is, but, you know, to go back to your original question, you asked it, almost always it is a small group of individuals.
Yeah, and you get stopped to one group and all of a sudden the numbers.
Right.
Ready?
In the past, we've seen a map of the town of Comox, and it would have little dots on it indicating the area where deaths happened or motor vehicle accidents were happening. I thought it was a really good snapshot to basically look at these issues, but to see where they were happening, and I'm just wondering if that's possible for you.
Certainly possible. Just let me ask you a couple of questions about what you would like to see on that. Because if we give you a map of Comox and put all of these, you know, 310 calls for service on it, it's going to be a map with a. So what sort of things would you like to be captured on a map?
Well, first, I just thought it was really interesting to see where the traffic issues were, you know, if there was a particular corner that had more collision or something like that. I should just mention the McDonald's corner, if there's, if there would be a bunch of little dots there that might highlight to us, there is a hotspot there or something.
There would be a few dots there, and there's several of mischief action. And some of that was associated to, I guess I'll call it targets of opportunity, with the long, the long weekend, the spring break, those weekends off, and that construction going on there. If somebody takes a construction site and puts it in the middle of the road, block traffic, that's a mischief. So a lot of that kind of thing was taking place, which wasn't, you know, tremendous in terms of damage or zero cost associated to it, but still a mischief for categorization purposes. But yeah, definitely, I can, I can add some maps to this.
Also, you know, if there's traffic violations that are heavily in one area, I know civil enforcement has been very good in the last number of months.
And sometimes that's exactly what it comes down to, is where we're focusing on versus, you know, and we do tend to be led by, from a strategic perspective anyway, by complaints. So we have complaints relating to a particular area, enforcement in that area, which will show a lot of presence in that area.
Okay, Inspector.
With regard to what's happening at McDonald's, have you any experience or ideas of what can help us move away from that situation? I mean, is it lack of other things to do, or is it just habits?
Some, I think some of it comes down to that, but really it comes down to choice on what we have to do. It's not unlike a drubbing and saying, let's go to, you know, wherever, a park and gather. So some of the, some of what's going on there, in fact, a lot of what's going on there isn't criminal, make sure it's just, that's where they're going to meet their friends and hang out. So we have had a conversation just recently with the management of McDonald's. They're, they're certainly on board in terms of making sure that people that do come to that area, come to that area for, for either, you know, to purchase food in their restaurant, or they're there for some sort of constructive purpose, not just to hang around in the parking lot, which, you know, even if somebody just hangs around in the parking lot, it's, it almost always something bad. So we just like to keep on our radar. There's a lot of people that are with us going through, so they may not be doing anything , so at least we're trying to encourage themselves a little for our people to do that.
All right, thank you, Inspector, and welcome again. All right, so we'll move on with departmental reports. First one we have is the planning and building department report, for the first quarter.
Move receipt.
And receive then, all's in favor. Any questions? This is, of course, our planner's work here, he's here, so he can certainly answer any questions.
Just wondering if we could have some conversation about what the coach house creation of zoning regulation, and the community started to talk to us about it.
There's been, you know, an effort to solicit input, so that's what's going on, but I'll let the planner speak to that.
Yes, we've gotten some very good interest, not only from citizens, but also from the construction industry, who've been working with a local contractor in terms of trying to ensure that what we come up with is something that is also cost effective and relevant. And we've also just been approached by, again, it's a construction company that manufactures these, but also does a lot of monitoring of regulations, primarily in the Greater Victoria area. And it's, that one's been quite interesting because they've identified some real roadblocks, even when it's legalized, in terms of carriage houses, things that will hold, that will hold up sort of the adoption process in the community, and also common areas of problems that exist. So for example, one of the things that they did find out in Greater Victoria is that where they allow the classical carriage house, where you have a lung over a garage, the garage got incorporated to the lawn. So you lost that parking allowance and you essentially create a larger than originally intended. So one of the things that we will be bringing forward to you is some new ideas on how to further streamline the process and how to, when we did the secondary suites, we really noticed that it was that first two people that came forward, that there was that real holdback. Then once the larger community saw how council and the community were reacting, they kind of gained momentum. So we've got some ideas coming forward in terms of how to get over that road.
So when will you guys be reporting back to council?
We should be reporting back to council in June.
Okay.
Someone mentioned to me on the same topic, that in Camden, there is a manufacturer of pre-pavedated little doors.
Island Timber fame.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they've been in contact with.
Yes, I'll talk ahead, the local contractor that we've been dealing with, I can't remember the name, but we also then did an advertisement on our website, the idea that any other contractors that were interested in finding out about the program or contributing could contact us, and that's actually how the outfit from Victoria contacted us.
I know Island Timber fame was in contact through Facebook, and they directed to staff, and they've done one in Victoria as well, so they're the pre.
Because they'll have specific sizes, so it would be good to see if a bag or fitted in was what would be.
Yeah, yes.
And I've heard positive things. One or two people have come up to me, and I'm really pleased to hear they're doing it. I haven't been looking negative. Yes?
There was one letter to the end here, but let's see how it goes. And it will depend entirely, I mean, we're proposing that we make wholesale changes, but, you know, we're going to provide some guidelines so that people, if they want to make an application, they can kind of jump through the person. So it'll be site specific. All right, anything further on the planning report? So we'll move on to parks and building maintenance report, first quarter, for receipt.
Move receipt.
And receive then, all's in favor. Any questions carry? And our parks and building maintenance directors here? Any questions? Yes.
I was just curious about the subtle landscape improvements in the downtown core of Marine Park in order to enhance the pedestrian experience.
It's more, mostly to do with the seasonal changes to the planting beds up on Comox Avenue, and some of the side streets, kind of off Church Street, for example, we've altered the landscape within those planting beds. So several changes, the new, old plants being swapped over for new plants. We always try to increase or bolster up the interest along those old land that we use over there, so just changes, mostly in species.
And they have these?
Yeah.
All right, anything further for, yes.
Just a question in regards to the tennis courts. We have that good news, a bullet story, but was there, has there a date been set yet for construction to start with?
We're looking at a tentative construction start date of June the 3rd, as was laid out in a tender package. So we're, the tenders have been laying, we're just now waiting for the responses with the close date of May the 16th. So that's the tentative schedule. So it'll be June 3rd through August 30th. It's the, hopefully, the window.
Great, great, thanks. And I know that there's neighboring residences that'll be all in touch, what's going to happen in terms of destructions.
That's correct. I've been in contact with one, one individual that lives very close by, and I've heard that now that we have the dates somewhat fleshed out, we'll wait for the close on the 16th to ensure that the schedule can be mapped, and we'll go to advisory to everybody around the neighborhood there, that these works will be going on, and ensure that we'll know as the field cops are supposed to.
Right, and assume the same consultation and communication you'll have with the tennis club members.
That's correct, yes.
Just one last question in regards to the municipal arena. Are the folks that, that rep base there, are they notified of all the work that's done by the caretaker, et cetera?
That's correct, yes.
So they get notified?
Yes. This particular survey that I'm referring to in the, in the report is, is a, it's a very comprehensive survey, so we're going to be working with divers in the water, and so we'll be letting all of our people down there know well in advance that safety crews and dive, dive masters will be operating. It's not very, it's not terribly invasive on our, on our customers, and this particular company has very well, has a very good reputation for this kind of work. So they ensure their own safety and location measures on the box as well, so everybody will be taken care of.
And they're aware of the increased time that's been given to the caretaker?
Yes.
Sure.
And just, I've been asked a couple of times about our emergency response in the event of an oil spill down at the Marine Avenue, and also they pointed out that there had been a bit of a slip of oil coming out of the storm drain. So that, is it a problem, or do people know what to do?
It's not been a real problem. It's not uncommon from time to time to have or detect flood on, on the water course. There's a number of things upstream that we don't have tech controls on, it could, you know, a car, for example, that's leaking oil in proximity to a cash basin, that's feeding that particular oil, it all could have, could show up. There are bad people out there that tend to dispose of their household products in a, not a very sound manner, that inadvertently end up in the systems. But as to, to speak briefly about spill response, all three of the marinas are trained and work cooperatively in the event of a spill, the fire department would be notified if it looked like a fuel spill of significance. And in terms of spill response reporting, it's clearly marked, and the information is contained on a number of different placards throughout the marina for the call numbers. We have so many people down here that the marina by and large is under pretty tight scrutiny, so a lot of eyes and peers on the ground are very quick to report back to us, and then we investigate and report back accordingly. So I think we're in good shape down there, and it's due to the cooperative nature of all three marinas working together.
All right, anything further? Sitting at, and we'll move on to financial statement, first quarter report, for receipt.
Move receipt.
And receive then, all's in favor. Any questions, comments for Director Finance? Okay, here's the self-explanatory. Any further things you wish to add after your time?
No.
Okay. Thank you for your report. All right, public works, departmental reports, for receipt.
Move receipt.
All's in favor, questions carry. We have our engineer here for, any questions on the capital project operation status summary? Yes.
I just want to tell Shelley what a great report this is, how easy it is to follow, and how simple it is to know exactly what you're doing, and if you have a question, it's just, this is, this is a really good way to report out, except it comes up sideways on you, so. What other map?
One's a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
Yes, I knew it.
Yes.
Thanks. Could I, could I just ask, the Comox, Rodella, that famous pedestrian cross, explain what the work is that's going to happen at, the improvement, Comox and Rodella?
Yes. It's just to widen the letdown. The letdown was quite narrow, so to get to the push button, it was difficult if you were on scooter or wheelchair, that they could fall over the, the curb, so they're just going to widen it a little bit.
Okay.
Could you just give us an update on the Loerwick? I've had a few people just, I mean, it seems to be the piece of road that's continually being dug up, and although it is hydro doing it, you know, people are just like, why is always happening? And they give a little update on what we're doing there.
Yeah, it was definitely, yeah, it started, it was the third phase, so it was sort of this three year. Obviously, the year the projects were dictated by obviously budget and time, because we're trying to coordinate both projects at the same time. This is the last phase of it, with hydro coming through right to Lynch Art, so they're to be done by the end of June. And then, and we kind of pushed them with that because of our road resurfacing, so then we'll follow behind them, hopefully start up in July, first week of July after long weekend, and then through road resurfacing there, we'll have sidewalk along 700 Anderton, which is the vacant property across from the Shoppers Governor's House. And then that will be done for that section of the road, so we've had a lot of that to do on it, because it's such a long span of it, that we kind of had to break it up.
And expected completion?
We're hopefully to get it all done before school starts September.
Well, hydro will be done over there in July.
Yeah, and then we start, yeah, okay.
And then from that section, hydro's actually going to head back to the boulevard, it's running quality foods. The first year that we put in, they just came into our boulevard, stubbed it, and then the second year, they continued on to the top of the boulevard at the corner of Anderton and Aspen, and then continued. So there's a section within that boulevard that they are going to go to there after they finish up at that intersection, just so that they're not slowing us down with our work. So you'll see them moving back there because they missed that section, so.
Does that affect the intersection though?
It might. They have a detailed traffic management plan as well, they're hoping to get it all done with one-way traffic and not having to hold anything up or no networks in plan at this point, so.
Okay.
So hopefully the impact to shop.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Thank you, Shelley. All right, so next one is the violent enforcement quarterly reports.
Move receipt.
And receive then, all's in favor. Questions carry? And again, this is received for information, any questions for Deputy Corporate Administrator? Go ahead, Frank.
I'm just curious on the topic of the illegal suites, number 30 compliance, is there sort of a, what's the reply from the property owners when they are, they just unaware, or they, is there anything yet?
Yeah, a number of cameras are due to owners not resident in the suites and, so they do claim they want to go.
So, sorry, they're not occupied, owner occupation?
Right.
Right. So what's the outcome of that if the, obviously they aren't living there, they have to bring in complaints if they don't have a suite?
They have to either de-condition a suite, or they have to, yeah, de-convince someone.
And how many, would there be a number that are, had, are owner occupied, but have suites, but are property, are they?
Right. Yeah, there could be older existing suites as well.
So a number of those going through all of your offices? And brother Shelley? Sitting on, we'll move on to the direct departments report, for the.
Move receipt.
And receive then, all's in favor. Questions carry? Our Director is here, if you have any questions on the Comox. Things are working out?
Yeah, and it's great, and the fitness center, and I'm thinking of signing it to Thin Passes, I mean, got the, excited by it. But I was wondering, and it's probably something that's been said, and I've forgotten, but the municipal alcohol policy, what is that to do with, is that to do with event planning?
I'll let our Director for Operations speak to that.
The municipal alcohol policy is basically a policy with permission of eligibility that would cover the sale or distribution of liquor on any municipal property. So the regulations that have to follow the process on which you can apply for these sorts of things, operational considerations into that.
So working together, we have a standardization at the end?
We're working with all of the other local governments to come up with a process that is central, part of this identification of facilities where you can have alcohol or not have alcohol, so that would be a key balance as far as the process that they would go through to apply for a beer guarantee, for example, with these same origins, with the same company. So we want to standardize this, so probably who are on events. would be here, same as the company, so, we want standardized, so, probably who put on events and do things, and applying to these kinds of things, would face a standard process rather than a different one here, and of course, because it makes it easier for everybody, and it's also important for our staff to sort of understand what requirements, what you do, the legality from these sorts of things, that's also part of the thing, to ensure that our staff are knowledgeable, able to advise the public on what process they do to do these things.
Ken?
Would it be more of a one-stop shop sort of thing, too, where you go to, you can go to one place and get your, okay, to get a liquor license? Like, I know the way it is now, you go to the RCP, then you have a beer, and then all of that, it's free, it's just, it's got run down there, and I know a lot of people think they've actually got the license when they don't actually have the license, so, you know, you go to one place and just get it all done at one spot, that way?
I don't think that's possible, I, I like the idea, I don't think it's possible because of the legal involvement of each part of that, our basic role with the beer garden licensing is to say, yes, you can sell or consume alcohol on municipal property, beyond that, we can't legally say the regulations around that, we have questions, definitions on it from markets, to protect that, so, liability insurance, and, you know, noise kinds of things, things of that nature, but the RCP also have a legal requirement to sign up on these things, and the liquor distribution branch also has, so the liquor inspector manages to control things as well, so, each one of those levels of government authority have to have their own specific rule of process.
All right, anything further, Ken?
Just one last, Jim, is the Anderton Park outdoor fitness facility that was put in there, and this may, maybe it's already been considered, is there anything that the Rec Department might do now that the weather's changed for the good, to have a kickoff program or something to encourage seniors to use it? I remember on opening day, it was a cold, wet day in November, and just the, I think it might, it might, it might not have gone its due now that it's nice, nice weather there, and it may already be in the works, but something like that.
There isn't anything at the present time, but it's a great idea, certainly take that back and, and potentially do something after that. We have, we are going to be offering an outdoor TRX program outside the rec facility, I don't think they're considering doing something that's equivalent.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that suggestion. All right, seeing nothing further, then we'll move on to the Fire Chief's report, for receipt. I receive then, all's in favor, so, yes, definitely our condolences to any family that is in service on Monday, Friday, and to the chief, I know he's going to be a loss to your department, obviously, to his family, so, I'll be sorry to hear that, hardworking members, I'll let you, have any further, do any report, or anything else you wish to comment?
Well, you didn't cover it well, Mr. Mayor, with the following reports.
You, do you have any?
I just wanted to offer this, is that the letter that you received from the visiting speaker that you brought in, was, it really hit home to me how special this, our Fire Department is, and then, in concert with the tragedy that happened, how the department, the sisterhood and brotherhood of your members that just jumped to help the family, it was just phenomenal, and I just, kudos to all your department, it's not, my, the impression that's left by this visitor who came, who was in the field, and certainly from the feedback from his family is that they're just overwhelmed how wonderful Fire Department is, I just have to tip your hat to.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, that letter was really important to me, this presenter is like the rock star of the fire service, so we referred him to, to, to say that was pretty important, so.
Anything further? Okay, thank you, Chief, for your report, and for all the work you've been doing on a regular basis. All right, so, we're going to move on to staff report, the amendment to community response, and motion to receive, I know.
Move receipt.
I receive then, all's in favor, motions carried. Director Finance, Deputy, I should say, Andrew Boxus, but our Director Finance is here, and it's also a bit of a plan target, it looks like we've got a slight extension for any funds that we have currently in the hop, so, any further data, any questions? Of course, we're leading, seeing what the new programs will be for the old, the fast acts beyond 2014. All right, so, proceed accordingly. Correspondents, we have two letters, I received one from the Inspector on the police report, which we heard a little earlier, and then first the letter that's just been referenced here, Dr. Jass.
Do you want to receive them all, and?
Sure.
All at once, or receive all three of those?
Second.
All's in favor? Any comments?
It would be nice in our newsletter, too, to refer to the thank you letter to our Fire Chief, just to remind our citizens how fortunate we are to have the facilities and staff that do that, and the training center, and that it, you know, and that so much of this is volunteer labor that built the training center, I mean, it's pretty amazing.
Hi, Deputy Clerk, and I have to, yes, and so what, that might go up?
I'm scared.
There'll be another one, though, with the tax notice, right?
There will be, yes.
All right, so, certainly. Try to do one of them. You can handwrite something on the back. Fair enough, thank you. Anything further? Sitting down, and staff is our agenda, we'll do a journal.
Move.
All's in favor?